I call to order the Board of Trustees' regular meeting for February 21st, 2023, and the time is now 6:00 PM. Trustee Johnson, would you like to give the invocation?
Yes. Stay with me. All right, Evans. Durham, thank you for the stay. Thank you for our citizens here in the Township. Thank you for the freedoms we have, the safety we had here with no war here. I pray for those who are out keeping us safe on our behalf. I pray for their families as they miss them when they are gone. Amen.
Amen. Please join with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, Ms. Varian.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
I move to adopt the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Johnson?
None.
Mr. Evans?
Uh, yes. Again, Ms. McKee ignored everything the parliamentarian Joe Chris Smith recommended regarding our meeting's agenda. Not once have you provided the proposed agenda items to the board prior as a draft, nor sought or considered any agenda items. And I am dismayed that important matters of this board continue to be ignored. It's been over nine months since we've had any update. There's been zero update on the Meek Street lawsuit. It's been over nine months with zero updates from the Economic Development Committee that was created and headed by Ms. McKee. There's been over five months with no updates about Skanel Rhino Storage or any important issues pertaining to the effects of development that are affecting our residents' lives in a negative way. There's been over six months since any department report to this board. That's to this board and to the public. It used to be every first meeting of the month, every department had a report. There have been zero since Ms. McKee removed it from the agendas. This is not transparency. It's been over four months and no action until tonight regarding energy aggregation, and I see they're going to just shove it through. Commissioner Timbub came in here and stated that we should, as part of our due diligence and fiscal obligation to our residents, should bring in other aggregators to present. And Ms. McKee has shut that down. And it was one year without any update or input regarding the union. We finally had an executive session, but there's been no input from this board prior to that for an entire year, and I see we have another resignation from the road crew. There are important matters that need to be addressed in this township, and there are not. Now, I have requested that we discuss the aggregation, not pass it, not force through anything, but discuss bringing people in here. Why aren't we, as a board, doing our due diligence and bringing in multiple aggregators in here for the betterment of our township? I've received one with lower rates than the proposed one that you're going to shove through. That's wrong. We also need to discuss the administrator. This board still has not told me who was interviewed that Friday when I was out on COVID restriction. I have no idea who was interviewed. Two people were interviewed, and they refused to disclose that. Why aren't we discussing this at the board? How did those interviewees? How were they chosen? Improper discussions outside the meeting and coordination, that's illegal. So we need to have that discussion. We also have to have a discussion on the improper increase in benefits to our health coverage that nothing's being about and we're receiving illegally. Even the prosecutor stated that. Why are we discussing streaming of meetings? That's transparent. I have to continue to do so in others as residents. That is not transparency. It can be stated over and over, "I'm transparent. I want to work together." No actions speak louder than words. So I move to amend the agenda to include a discussion on aggregation of bringing in other aggregators to present. I also would like to add a discussion on the administrator position, since that apparently is being discussed outside the meeting. And also, I would like to add the discussion on improper increase in benefits, as well as a discussion on why we have no reports from departments, committees, anything. That's my motion.
Roll call, Ms. Varian.
Mr. Evans.
No.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKee.
Yes. I move to set a limit to no more than one speech of three-minute length on the same question on the same day for each trustee. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, trustee Johnson?
None.
Mr. Evans?
Yes. Again, why are we trying to limit actual conversation? Why is it one time? That's making a statement again. It should be a discussion, but obviously others are not open to a discussion, just predetermined outcomes in this meeting, as the prior board with Mr. Johnson and Mr. Carlin. That is a shame. And again, there's no problem with limiting it to three minutes. If items are properly presented to this board prior, they can be reviewed. I received this treble information just now. I have not had the proper opportunity to review it, and that's by design. So if things are presented, they can be handled in an expeditious manner. However, the secrecy and predetermination of this board is shocking. So again, I move to remove, to amend the proposed motion and remove the not more than one speech from the prior motion maker, keeping the three-minute limit.
If I could die for lack of a second? Roll call, Ms. Varian.
Mr. Evans.
No.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKee.
Yes. I move to approve the minutes for the...
It wasn't.
That's why you didn't have it in there.
It wasn't.
I'm sorry. So I guess we'll have to scratch that. We'll have him on the next meeting. Mrs. Brown? Thank you. Okay, I appreciate that. Thanks so much. I know you've been a lot more on yesterday than you're holidaying. Thank you. I would like to introduce Kyle Lund with the Director with the Lincoln County Park District. Please come up to the podium, Mr. Kyle, and state your name and the record.
Thank you, Madam President. My name is Kyle Lund and I'm the Director of the Lincoln Park District.
Hi, thanks for coming out.
Thanks for having me.
Appreciate it.
The reason I'm in front of you today was to see if we could get the freeway drive into our park district property. Currently, it ends at about midway at a resident's house, and we wanted to extend that driveway to our park district property so then we could then attach and create a small parking lot for approximately five, six cars in the park property at Palmer Road Swamp.
We had a discussion last week on it. I know you brought it to the board, and there was also a response from the prosecutor's office as well. So we all are updated on what took place, but we also... The discussion tonight would be, you know, I know we talked about gravel, maybe graveling that area, who would pay for it, and then in the future, after we get it gravel, maybe talk, discuss, maybe paving it once we start paving that road in the future. Just wanted to see what... I don't know if you spoke with your board about that, to see what kind of things that they would like to partner with, to make sure that gets taken care of, and how would... And then in the future, how would we make sure that people aren't hanging out in that little area, because it could be an area that cars could frequent and sit over there and cause some issues. So is there anything that you want to kind of share that you could do to try to prevent that from happening?
Sure. I could add to the, as far as the bad hangout spot, the park district plans to install a gate at the end of the drive. So currently, the park property is permit only, so persons would have to seek a permit through our office, and then we would give them a code for the gate to access that property only for that date and time. And then that permit is then placed on their vehicle. And if the vehicle is there without a permit, and if a local resident saw that, they could then call the authorities and make them aware of that issue. As far as a cost share, knowing that specifically talked to the board regarding a type of cost share for that improvement of the road, from what I understand, it's approximately 50 feet from the edge of pavement ending to the park district property. But the park district would front the entire cost of our portion from park boundary into the parking lot. Engineers estimate, right around, for that portion is like $13,000. And that would be for a gravel parking lot.
Just curious, would there be cars there after dark? Because these are residents back of their property.
There should not be any cars there after dark. Parks are open from dawn to dusk.
Okay. I don't have any more questions. Trustees?
No.
You guys said you would grau the area between the park boundary and your parking lot, correct?
Correct.
But the other 50 feet, you would not do that, or you wouldn't do that to where the end of the road is?
There's no plans currently. That's what we're requesting that the township consider putting in gravel road access to our property line.
So you want the township to put the entire bill for that, is what you're asking?
That's what I'm asking.
Okay.
If there's further discussion, it needs to be in front of the board.
So you're not... You're asking if you can do it. You're asking if we will do it for you.
Correct.
Okay.
Thanks for coming in. I did have a question. We took this up last year and, you know, discussed again. Have you gotten any cost estimates for that 50-foot portion of what it would cost? Because we extended it for a video hall for Mr. Haiti at one time to his property line. I think it was like over 13,000, and it was... He had no use for it. He wasn't...
Yeah.
There was no purpose for it, really, in my mind. But do you have any general costs for the gravel? What kind of base? Or Ms. McKee mentioned later paving, but unless you pre-install the required base, you're going to have to rip up everything and repave if you want asphalt in there. So have you looked at any of the cost estimates, or...?
No, we just took it from our property line into the park. We didn't anticipate any potential cost from roadway to our property line.
And the one thing I would say that I'm a big supporter of the parks and that, but I believe in treating all property owners equally. And all the residents in that neighborhood and elsewhere, their property lines stop about 20 foot from the road. It's a 60-foot right away, 30 foot on each side. So all the residents are responsible for paving between their property line and the road to extend it, which is about 20 foot. And you're asking us to extend it all the way to the property line. Is there... Would the board be open to sharing that, since that does kind of terminate prematurely in regards to everybody else's, sharing kind of, you know, 20-30 split on that, like a 40-60 split, or anything like that?
I can't speak for the board, but I could definitely bring it up at their next board meeting.
I'm just concerned with, again, I want to support the park district, but we have a lot of funding concerns going forward. We just have a loan that we didn't know about for $650,000 that we have to pay. Revenue's from jets are declining, and so I think we just have to be very mindful of our spending. And I'm not sure what's in your budget and with the Evans Foundation. Is the Evans Foundation paying for this, or is this through the district?
Presently, it'd be through the district. Now, there are funds in the Palmer Road Swamp preserved through the Lincoln County Foundation that might be able to assist with this, about once it's complete, for that 13,000 dollars. But if it's not within park district property, we would not be able to use that foundation monies.
Like I said, I'd be more comfortable with, you know, we... I'd support bringing the road up to the 20-foot like everybody else's, if you want to cost share the rest of it. I think I'd be fine with that.
Are there intentions to pave that gravel part back there eventually? So would you build your drive up spec to be able to pave that later?
I don't believe there's any intention for the park district to pave that drive. We're striving towards more, or driveways that are not solid, so we're not creating more runoff, as far as our preservation and conservation efforts.
You want permanent services. And there wouldn't be expected any heavy equipment back there, right?
We'd look for just our own trucks and maybe occasionally a bucket truck in the event that there's a tree in the area that may need some work.
And maybe the county engineer could help with any kind of design with the gravel work that's needed in there.
Yeah, they've already given us a spec for a culver at the property line, so 30-foot long, I believe 12-inch diameter that we would need to put in as far as a driveway approach.
And they give you spec for the gravel type you have to put down and so forth, the base and things, they don't matter?
We had an engineer provide a spec for that.
Do you have that?
I do not have that at the P L.
Can you forward that to the board, please?
Absolutely.
Because I would think with that, the county engineer, I mean, they could provide estimates for road repairs, rejuvenation, that I want McKee to be able to give kind of a cost estimate of what's expected. That's all the questions I have.
That's all I have to... Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kyle.
You're very welcome.
Yeah. I would like to introduce Larry Taylor with the Trebell.
Thank you for having us out this evening. My name is Larry Taylor. I'm with Trebell Energy, and I believe I introduced Scott Raffel to the trustees. Scott is the... He's kind of the do-all kind of guy back at the office, takes care of a lot of things for us. It's just nice he was out this way. It was just nice to have him along this evening. I'm here tonight to ask the trustees to approve an EMA, an LOA, a master service agreement for gas aggregation, and a master service agreement for electric aggregation. I passed out a graph, and the biggest reason that this is something that needs to be done quickly, I would like to add that something that I don't have in my notes here. The last two times I've been out, we've talked about volatility in the market, and we need to, you know, position ourselves where we can make decisions quickly because of that volatility, and that would be in the best interest of the residents. So it's not something that I'm just bringing up tonight. If you look at that graph, you can see over the last 13, 14 months that the gas market up and down, a lot of up, but over the last few months, it's really plummeted. A lot of the power plants are... They get a lot of the electric plants get their power from gas, so as gas goes, a lot of times, electric goes. And as you can see, wherever on the right of the graph, today, gas was down to like $2.16, and if you look back, back in August, it was almost over a dollar. So it has plummeted, and this is the time that we need to act. The price to compare in AEP on June 1st is going to anywhere between 11 and 12 cents. They've already done the auction back in November, the capacity auction, and although they're not able to say exactly what that rate will be, pretty confident that it'll be between 11 and 12 cents. One of the nice things about the aggregation program is the work that Scott does is what we're able to do this evening, if we're able to act quickly, is provide a rate of .0681 cents per kilowatt hour. That would be a 24-month agreement. And we are able to do a Columbia Gas of Ohio fixed rate of .579 cents per CCF, again for The savings that the residents have been able to enjoy over the last approximately 32 months is up to about $673,000. And that is with a difference of 1 to 2 cents. The difference in this from .0681 to, let's be conservative and just say 10 cents, and say the price to compare goes to 10 cents, that's over 3 cents. So it can be a significant, significant savings for the residents to choose to be in the electric and gas aggregation program. This is Scott's recommendation to the trustees. We feel this would be in the best interest of the residents, so I'm here to ask for a motion to adopt the EMA, the LOA, and the gas and electric MSAs.
I have some questions for Larry, if that's appropriate.
Are you asking me?
Yes, if you're in front of me and I'm asking you.
Didn't hear my name, that's why I'm asking.
I'm asking the chairperson if it's appropriate to...
Absolutely.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor, I've been trying to get from you what you charge on fees for past aggregations. Past aggregation, you have been required to stick with certain fees, and those fees are to be disclosed per that contract. Now, I have asked for those fees. They've not been provided. You've said today that they have been provided. Can you tell me when they have been provided? Because I did not receive them, just like I did not receive the email stating, "Here's all the documents that is set for tonight that was sent to everybody but me."
Wonder why?
So, Ms. McKee, so is there a reason that you're not disclosing past fees?
I believe we even discussed this at the OTA conference when you stopped to buy a booth.
In which you said you provided them, which you have not.
We have provided them. You asked for the date. Now, I don't know what date it was.
Can you resend those?
Sure.
Send them to him.
For all aggregation terms, contracts, for the gas and electric. And the question I do have is, and I'll take what you said, that with a 1 to 2 cent difference, that's $600,000. I talked to one aggregator that's been wanting to talk to this board, and their rates are over 1 cent less for a smaller entity than us on electric, and over, it's approximately 1 and 1/2 cents less on gas. Now, with us being a larger entity, the rates would be even lower. Now, back on, again, you're saying the urgency of the matter. Back on October 4th, the commissioner came in and said, "You need to talk to other aggregators, because there's some concerns." And this board has refused, and I think for fiscal obligation, fiduciary obligation to the residents, that we need to talk to other aggregators, other terms, because in this contract, and again, I just saw right beforehand, because it's not being shared with me, that this term, you have an underlying contract for 41 months, but these aggregation terms are two years. That's not right. You're trying to lock us in, and all the other aggregators that I've spoken to do not do that, because you should earn the business, but you want to lock it in with overlapping terms, and it's 41 months, and these are two years. So you're always going to have that step where you cannot get out of it, and I'm really concerned about the confidentiality clause, where it says, "This agreement is confidential. It shall not be shared." I'm sorry, what agreement that is in the benefit of our residents should be withheld from them? If this was an open, "Hey, we're saving you money," you champion it, you put it up on the wall. When things are wrong, in my opinion, you hide it. And again, no fees in here, so I...
Is there a question in there? Do I get an opportunity?
Yeah. I believe that, number one, this board should not move forward with any resolution or motion because it wasn't on the agenda. This was a presentation. Now you're asking us to do a motion, and Ms. McKee has it all laid out here, ready to just approve it. That's wrong.
The market's down, it's the time to go. I've been saying that for nine months.
It's wrong.
I've been saying it for nine months.
If we wait another two weeks and bring in other aggregators, because if you're going to buy a car, the salesman's going to tell you, "I could save you 500 bucks." Well, if you don't talk to another one, you don't know what the savings could have been. And I can tell you right now, and I emailed this to the board, you might not have looked at it, but here's the rates for a smaller entity, and our increased size, the rates would be even less.
A car dealer, in the same example, is going to tell you exactly what you want to hear. There's no repercussions. They can put anything they want down on that piece of paper.
So why are we talking? So we want to listen to the one that's going to tell us whatever we... What he wants us to hear, but you don't want us to hear anybody else?
You made a comment earlier that you need some proof. Again, I said this eight months ago, there's $673,000 in proof that the trustees in the past made a great decision for the residents.
And how much more could have been saved? I still, in my opinion, and this is my opinion, that without disclosing the fees, the only reason to not disclose fees that are contractually required, contractually required...
The fees haven't been disclosed.
Is if you violate them.
You just haven't opened them or read them. This is not the first time we've had this conversation.
No, and even these fees are 440% higher than the other aggregators. The other aggregators that I've spoken to numerous times are upfront about their fees. And that this would be doing a disservice to our residents, and I'm concerned that things are being politically done. I know those in the firm have made contributions, and I've even heard comments during the election. So I don't think we should play favorites to anybody. Our commissioner came in and suggested that we should speak to others. This board has refused to even talk about it. I think they're pretty wise about how to do this.
I think the commissioner would have been in his best interest to speak to us as well, but he didn't do that.
Well, we have an obligation...
He just had his opinion, and you've got your opinion, and...
And you want us to listen to your opinion, where you're making all this money 440% more than the other aggregators? The ones I've spoken to said, "Hey, I'd love to get the fees."
The other aggregators can tell you anything they want to tell you. They can tell you anything you want to hear.
And you are doing so right now.
I'm putting... We're putting it in writing what we can do.
So they... So, and they want that opportunity.
Well...
And if this is pushed through...
Does it say on there that that's good just for today? Or does that say it's good for 30 days?
This is... Well, why don't we have people... This is, well, why don't we have, why don't we have people bid? Why don't, because we took this on, we had, not this board...
Because it's not broken.
You're saying, you're saying, you're saying trust us when you won't disclose your fees.
We have disclosed the fees.
I've asked numerous times.
And I think, I'm not an attorney, but I believe it says right in there, in the previous one, that we would have to, our fee would be 2 mil or less. I think it says that, right there.
And you think, you think it's fine to make this agreement confidential?
You know what? I'm not an attorney. I don't know. Here's what I do know. Trebell represents 170 communities. We've been in business for 12 years.
And many have left Trebell.
We save people, residents, a lot of money.
Many have left.
And my job is not to be an attorney and try to answer your question about something that, if I had to guess, probably doesn't even apply.
And I haven't even had an opportunity to speak to our attorney over this. Again, Ms. McKee kept this until last minute, and apparently orchestrated this. This is a disservice to our residents. Again, this had to go on the ballot to get enacted. We have a fiduciary responsibility, and I've already shown one. So bring them in, and have them put in writing, we guarantee this rate or lower.
Anybody who has, any entity knows, they can't guarantee that price.
1 cent per your words...
It's like the stock market, it goes up day and, every day, it changes.
Mr. Taylor, 1 cent difference per your words was 600,000. This is a cent to 2, 7 and 1/2.
They could have written anything on that piece of paper that they wanted to. The car dealer across the street, the car dealer across the street could have told you he was going to give you 1,000 bucks off on that car. He can tell you whatever he wants to tell you. But I, we have an in writing, expert opinion based on fact, this is what we can do based on the market.
And I believe we can do better. And how do we know we can't do better unless we try? I believe this is politically motivated, in my opinion, and we can't do this, and it should not be...
Who's the politically motivating, who? I'm just curious. You keep saying that.
This company has, and their individuals, and/or their individuals have made political donations.
To?
To the prior trustee.
Okay, that trustee's no longer here.
He is working with you.
Has nothing, this has nothing to do with this...
What I would like to know is, why is the board, the board could require you, you guys are taking the stance that a trustee can't make you disclose your fees?
We have disclosed ours.
No, you have not.
Well, then I guess we agreed to disclose.
When you leave here, send it to me. Is that your promise? Because I promise, I've already been threatened, that if I pursue those prior fees, they're coming after me.
Threaten? Where are you looking? You mean threaten? Somebody threaten you, Mr. Evans?
And I will, because this is about the public interest, and if you, if Trebell overcharged, our residents deserve a refund.
Did you go at the OTA and ask any of the other townships that we represent, what they thought about Trebell?
I've talked to a ton, when I was there, Mr. Larry, I talked to a lot of people down there, and they all had good things to say about Trebell.
I've spoke to many with many concerns.
Hmm. So one trustee has spoken to many and had no problems, you've spoken to many and have had many concerns, interesting.
And also talked to...
Doing my due diligence. Like I said, if Trebell would say, here's what we charge, the last contracts, and it was verified, okay. But if you're going to hide the past fees...
We didn't hide any past, we've already disclosed it to you.
I've got emails saying that.
So, just curious, you spoke to folks down at the conference, Mr. Evans. I know you, I got an email from Trebell stating that you were harassing them at their booth, but I didn't see a response back from you, just curious, why you didn't respond back to that?
Well, I didn't respond, because it is illegal for us to discuss things outside the meeting.
Wait, wait, wait a minute.
Correct?
No, wait a minute.
So we can discuss it now, Ms. McKee?
Mr. Evans, you send a lot of emails. This email came from the Trebell, and I'm just asking you a question right now. You didn't respond to the fact that they accused you of harassing them in public down at the conference, at their booth?
I walked up and asked them, when are you going to disclose your fees? Simple as that.
I was standing right there. What was his answer?
We already did.
We already did.
And there's outstanding records of questions, which there are not.
And what was your response, when Mr. Mel Castor said we already did? What was your response in front of everybody?
You know, you could easily, if you did produce the fees, you could come in here with an email and say this, and I would have egg on my face, wouldn't I? Why would you do that?
I've got a question here that I want to go home sometime tonight and listen to this. So I'm going to ask you a direct question. Your actual price that you're presenting, right, for the gas, natural gas program, are they correct?
Yes.
It's 57 cents, almost 58 cents, right?
Correct.
And that's per?
Per CCF.
All right. So this, Mr. Evans, says that it's a half cent per CCF. Is there that much of a difference? Is it that huge?
What do you mean a half cent?
It says a half cent right on there. It says .005 per CCF. And it's got a dollar sign and a zero for the point. That tells me that is a half a cent.
That's, that's...
That tells me half a cent.
That's the fees.
The fees?
Which one? You're looking at Aspen Energy. Look at, look at the, the...
I'm sorry.
Electric.
I'm sorry.
The electric fees are .030 and 45, where theirs is 440% higher. So the way it works is, the aggregator goes out to the suppliers, and whatever their fee is, they just tack on to what they get. So if they get a rate, or the other ones, the other one's rate's lower, so we'll get a lower rate for our residents.
That's not how it works. Basically, the fee is 1%, but you have this 440% less. That's what got me. So how'd you come up with that number?
Because the prior one is .0020. That's 440% higher than .00045.
The fees are?
The fees, correct.
You're talking about the last contract. So you, so the fees, so you know the fees on the contract, correct?
This one, they won't disclose, because they want it to be secret.
But you see it on the other one.
Yeah, that you approved.
But you don't know the fees.
On the current one?
On this one, on the current one.
Correct, because they will not disclose them.
But you know from the other one, you're saying the fee's less, so it's, is what the other people are taking, 440% less?
Less than Trebell should have on the prior contracts, which in my opinion, they probably took more. Because who was ever going to check on that?
Did you read the email that was sent to you with the comparisons of two gas stations? Where if a customer pulls into the gas station and pays 50 cents a gallon here and 50 cents a gallon here, and this guy over here runs a much more efficient company, and is able to make a little bit more margin? Is that not okay in America?
It's not the same. Your form, you're pushing people to one, and those fees aren't the same, because these fees would be less. Because they get the bids, and it's just tacked on.
That's not how it works. And we've explained to you how it works.
Even in your, in your contract, it states...
It's not how it works. When was the last time you personally spoke with a supplier and asked them, how do they, how do they accept their margin?
I've spoke with PUCO, I've spoke, believe me, I've done my due diligence in this.
Well, in my opinion, it doesn't necessarily sound like it, because that's not how it works. I've done this for nine, 10 years.
And there's many people that have left Trebell for various reasons, good reasons. And so even, like I said, our county commissioner...
I've talked to some trustees over in Harrison Township, and the residents, and they like Trebell. I've not heard anything negative, and that's right next to the line.
That's not what I hear.
The finished price, the finished price that the customer pays...
Yes.
Is what the contract states. Whether the fee's 10%, 20%, 1%, whatever, is that correct? Or is that fee tacked on to the price that they...
Oh, does that price include where our margin is?
Yes.
Yes.
So the end price is the only thing that matters, because it's not tacked on to the bill, correct? Like the fee you get is not tacked on to the price.
Correct. It's already included in there, and it's paid to us by the supplier.
It's hidden in there.
So it's whatever it is.
It's not hidden in there.
So there's no additional cost...
The suppliers and the brokers...
There's no additional cost to the township people.
Correct.
The consumers, whether the fee is 20%, rather it's...
Correct. And it's not hidden. A supplier wants to make margin. If I go in there and say, hey, just put, put a half a mil on it, margin for us, my experience says that they're going to do that, but they're going to tack on any leftover margin they could have for themselves. It's...
The residents can opt in and opt out at any, anywhere. Is there a fee?
Correct. If a resident would prefer to pay 11 cents per kilowatt, as opposed to .0681, they certainly can opt out at any time.
With, is there a fee for that?
No fee. No fee, no penalty, and then they can...
They're forced in. You have to...
No, they're not forced in. It's an opt-out program.
It's, they're automatically enrolled.
Can you let him talk, please? What did you say, Mr. Larry? I'm sorry.
It's an opt-out program. We have a choice when we present this to the PUCO, to make it an opt-out or an opt-in program. Opt-out program, we put together a list of the eligible customers, we send them a letter, and it says in that letter, this is what the trustees have worked out for you, your rate's going to be .0681 cents for this period of time. It says right in there, if you would like to be in this aggregation program, you need to do nothing else. If you don't want to be in it, you can opt out. You can fill out the little form at the bottom, or you can call this number and say, I don't want to be in it.
Correct. And one of those was just sent out, and numerous residents stated that they've received their little information after the time period. That's a concern. So I'm not sure what happened there. But again, I think this, number one, I don't think the board should take this up. We need thorough review. I need to talk to the attorney, and it's not on the agenda for any action. You can't put this stuff under presentations and then shove things through. So that should be the first thing that we're going to do, discuss it further next time. And the other aggregator couldn't make it tonight, because this was only learned right before the meeting, and they couldn't have somebody watch the kids. So there is an aggregator that says they can do it cheaper that wants to come in.
I'm going to speak up now. It's under presentations, but if the board decides they want to make a motion, they can. So that's not true, Mr. Evans.
It's not transparent.
It is true. It's true, you can do it. So let's not make that...
It's not transparent.
Call it what you want, but I'll...
I have another question to clarify for you. So in your terms of your management agreement, the state of this 41 months, correct, from the day that both parties signed? Okay, so that's almost, you know, it's roughly three and a half years, correct? So after two years, our contract comes back around, and the management agreement gives you rights to what? Does that give you rights to solely be our supplier? Does it give us rights to, that you can negotiate on our behalf at that point? What do we get?
It gives us the right to discuss with you about renewing it, the gas or electric program.
Can the other suppliers come in and discuss that with us during that timeframe?
Well, I think Mr. Evans has answered that. It doesn't matter if it can or can't. I think it's bringing people in. So the easy answer would be, yeah, he'll bring whoever he wants to bring.
I'd like to point out that this states, if it's the same, because I haven't had a chance to do this, but the other proposed contract that was for five years stated that you are the sole aggregator. There's a difference between supplier and aggregator. When you say can other suppliers, that's the wrong term, aggregator. And I can assure you, and you want to address this, that we could not bring in another aggregator, because I've seen threats of tortuous interference from your firm, of us discussing, bringing in aggregators and stuff like that.
But you went ahead and did it anyway?
So that's, not because, under the contract...
You know, you haven't answered like the last six of my questions.
Under the contract, you didn't have that exclusivity, and we weren't interfering with the current contract. But you're, I think what Mr. Johnson was saying, it's 41 months, and these terms are 2 years, so in 2 years, we're stuck with them. That they are the only person that can negotiate with other suppliers. So they're locking us in. Why don't you make it a 24-month term?
I'm not very...
To just like every other, you don't have to be an attorney, you're speaking on all the other terms. Don't you think that's fair to everybody? Because why would you want to lock us in? Do you have to lock people in that want to be with something? No. So, and this is overlapping terms. This is what's, what happens. And we don't, the term right now expires in May, May 23rd, for energy, for the electric. We don't have a gas one now, because he chose somebody that went bankrupt and not on the last one. We should have...
You say that, you say that as if that's our fault.
You chose that one, that program, that, that, yeah, as a consultant, you chose them. We didn't choose them. But my thing is, everybody else, I, everybody else I have spoke...
Technically, you did, because we recommended it, and you selected it, so...
Well, hopefully we get good advice, but...
And I'm not an attorney. That's correct.
Every other aggregator I spoke to said, you don't want overlapping terms. That that's, that's a red flag, trying to get you locked in, trying to, because then you're, at 41 months, you're going to say, well, that's coming up, we need another 41 month term. Well, then the other term ends, well, you can't leave your people without these rates. And there's other options online. People can opt in all the time. And what aggregators don't want is an opt-in, because people have to choose that. You want to opt out, because a lot of people won't see it, will ignore it. So there's a lot of people, a lot of questions, and I still say, we shouldn't take action, because I know there are others that have spoke out against aggregation in general. And they were not notified by this agenda that there would be any action. Every other entity states resolution. We have a resolution to appoint people. Why wouldn't there be a resolution to have an aggregation term? It's not transparent, no matter how much you say it is.
So let me ask you this. So, yeah, a note comes in mail, I don't send it back, opt into it, right?
Correct.
I will opt out later and go with whatever.
Correct.
Right, for the term.
Yeah, there's no fee to do that.
No fee to do that. And then I decide I want back in. Do I get back in?
Yes.
Okay. Do I get back out again?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a 30-day wait. The last time you said there was a 30-day wait.
30-day wait?
You have to, you're locked, then you give your house, you still have to pay for 30 days.
Well, yeah, till cycle.
Yeah, you just have to, I mean, I can call and get out today, but if my cycle doesn't stop for two and a half weeks, yes...
And at the same time, this gives you, it looks like, it appears to give you, it's to be our mail or our representative aggregation for the district party's script. So I mean, you mailed stuff to people and so forth.
Yeah, he made a comment earlier about...
And other aggregators mailed stuff to our clients, our, not clients, I guess, our township residents, as well.
What was that?
Can they mail, other aggregation companies mail to the residents at that point?
I don't believe so, but again, I don't know.
I mean, I would, because the township sets it up, correct? Right? So the township sets this up. We come up with a price, I mean, you come up with a price, we accept it, that's the price everybody can opt, they come into, if they want it, they don't want it, they can get their own, correct? So it's, it's another option for the township residents, pretty much is all it is. If they really want out of it, just they just have to do something extra if they're not already in one, get out. We negotiate for a decent rate. They want that rate, fine. If they don't, then go somewhere else.
Correct. And...
How do you know it's a decent rate if you don't shop it?
Well, .0681 is a lot less than .11. And if I want to spend the time as a resident to try to find something that's .065, they have a right to do that, and they can opt out. If they want to take advantage of it, they take advantage of it.
Lower rates right here, we should talk to them.
It's just something written on a piece of paper.
Is it current? And we should, we should have them come in, and I think what Mr. Johnson was getting at is, well, if we just go ahead with you, shove this through, residents can contact that company separately, but what aggregators do is with the economy of scale, and that's And that's what they just said on this, that for a smaller entity, these are the rates they actually got. These aren't pulled out, rolled the dice and put the numbers down for a smaller entity. So with the economy of scale, the more you have, the cheaper the supplier will give it to you. And so the rates would be better.
I appreciate your opinion, but if I was a resident, I would much more count on an expert, Scott Belcastro has been doing this for 12 years. That's what he does.
So what are the rates today that you know that come from the gas companies around here? You know, do you have those rates at hand?
You can buy apples to apples.
Yeah, like you're presenting.
I have no idea.
You have no idea what climate a gas would target, people just don't know it or how much, okay.
So as a, go on a second.
Yeah, he could go on the PUCO website and pull apples to apples.
.475 as of today.
What is it?
.475 as of today.
So, but my concern is as an expert in this, that you're presenting this to us, that you don't know the current rates. You don't, this is your business.
That's gas, right?
Gas.
No.
That's concerning.
That wasn't the question. The question was, did I know what other people's rates are? And I said, I didn't know all the rates. You could go to apples and apples.
I said, we're not doing our fiduciary responsibility.
We've been talking about it for nine months.
And it's been delayed until we got to this point where you gotta hurry up and shove this through for the benefit of the residents.
The last two times I've been here, I've said the same thing.
When we still have time, next meeting, let's bring in.
The next meeting, it might be too late. It's like the stock market. The rates might go up.
Could be lower.
You're going to rip off the residents.
You're asking us to take the word of a person that's not producing the fees as contractually required, that is wanting this entire agreement, not just the one, but all of this, to be confidential from the residents.
I believe, I was told today that you're, the trustee, the township solicitor has reviewed the documents and doesn't have any problem.
As to form, not as to, is it a benefit? Is it not? They're not saying, is it good or I have a concern about this, as to form. There's no huge grammatical errors. There's no, there's a big difference in that. And that's where people try to say, well, they've already proved it, as to form, not as to being appropriate.
Typically, you get the advice from your attorney.
It depends what you ask them. And I haven't had the opportunity to ask them, so I would like this to be tabled until I do, until we get more information and until we can bring in other aggregators. I know two that want to present to this board. They've spoken, one, I believe one of them has spoken here before.
Even though you understand that they weren't technically allowed to do that, correct?
What?
Even though technically they weren't allowed to do that.
No, they can't.
You just went ahead and did it anyway.
No, see, that's where you don't understand. We can't interfere with the current contract, but we can discuss and prepare for going forward. So your contract ends May 23rd, so, and we already have, I already have that opinion from the prosecutor, we can. So you said you're not an attorney. I spoke to them.
So that brings us back to the 41 month. So why 41? Explain to me why you have 41 months, why that number is in that box. That seems like a weird number.
I honestly don't know exactly why it's 41 months. It would have been something that Scott put in there. He took care of that this morning and I didn't ask him.
Is there any reason why Scott won't come in and speak to the board?
I'm sorry?
Is there any reason why Scott won't come in and speak to the board?
Well, I mean, he would certainly come in. He's on vacation.
Oh, is he?
I had the pleasure of coming in.
So can we table this?
If you don't have a real good answer for that, then we can change it probably, right?
I believe it was changed.
From what? From 42 or?
From five years.
From five years. Several months ago. Yeah, several months ago, it was, all of our agreements had said five years. And somewhere in there, there was discussion about making it less time. That was something that was important to the trustees. So I believe that's why Scott has done that. Why it's 41, I don't know.
I think we should probably determine why it's 41. And again, I move to table this matter.
Paul, we don't need to table, it's a presentation, so we're not making a motion tonight.
Okay, if there's no motion, that's fine.
You move to table because that's not the case.
Well, I'll move to invite other aggregators in to present to the board at our next meeting or make it a special workshop meeting. That's my motion. Doesn't this board want transparency and input and resident participation?
Thank you, Larry. Appreciate your.
There's a motion on the floor.
So would there be no motion to accept like a die for lack? I'm sorry?
Second, does somebody second the motion? Like there's no second?
I believe Larry's asking a different question. My motion was about bringing other aggregators in. He wants to know, are we going to shove this through tonight?
Again, this is presentation, so.
Well, then why do we have everything filled out that's passing tonight?
Thank you, Larry. So then, we're understanding there is to be a motion?
No motion on the floor.
No action.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sorry the plane changed.
I'm sorry.
We are now moving over to.
Sorry the plane changed.
We're now moving over to public comments. Please limit your public comments to three minutes and please come to the podium, state your name and your address for the record, please.
Ms. Brown, can you please use your phone?
That's 370 Jean, 484 Trail West. I suggest that all the trustees read Proverbs. The Book of Proverbs in the Old Testament, most of you are probably acquainted with it the Bible because in there, there are several statements on proper administration of government to the benefit of the public. You just have to substitute trustees with the word king. We had a nice salesman that was here today. When I, he talks about going to buy the car. When I go to buy a car, I don't go to just one dealer. I go to several dealers to look at the model that I want, find the car I like, and then I'll go to several dealers or call them or search online for the best price. I don't make a decision in one day. It's a decision that is one, you know, one versus the other. And yeah, someone will say, well, this deal is only good today. Several times I've gotten calls saying, you know, not an hour after I've left, oh, we can beat that deal by $3,000 or by this or that. So yes, we had a salesman here. We do need to talk to other aggregate salesmen to see what is the best for the public residents of Etna Township. Not for one or two people, not for someone who may be getting political donations or money under the table. Second issue I wanted to discuss was, you know, our, we're talking about, you guys were talking about how good our consultant was, but he has not done one thing about the Schenel issue that's been, before he even came, an issue. It's every single thing that has been an issue is still an issue. So how did he do such a good job if nothing was accomplished on that? Thank you.
Thank you.
Judy Kathmeyer, 29 Roman Court. It appears as though Etna Township meetings are becoming magic shows of epic proportions, just without the strobe lights, top hat and wand. I've noticed for some time that there's a lot of now you see it, now you don't going on. And just to highlight some of these abracadabra moments, a scheduled meeting on February 7th with the agenda posted the weekend prior and then suddenly gone. Agenda items requested by residents, poof. Anything related to Schenel and other favored contractors. Whatever Mr. Evans suggests for consideration and debate. Any discussion concerning the $31,000 outside council fees incurred by Ms. McKee in 2022. Valid reasons for replacing a nearly new security system and spending an additional $11,000 for a different one because the previous system worked. Suggested resolutions that might benefit and protect the quality of life for Etna Township residents. For example, exclusionary zones for large wind and solar facilities and zoning questions about variances granted to cement box builders that interfere with the quality of life for nearby residents. Residents come to this assembly expecting to have their voices heard and their concerns responded to, not to have them ignored and vaporized by the elected officials they trusted enough to vote for.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Ryan Davis, 8807 Watkins Road. It's always hard to call when Judy, she comes so prepared. I just want to speak from the heart and describe my squirming, cringing, just head in my hands position I was in throughout that whole exchange. All three board members should be ashamed of themselves that last go around. Mark had some valid points, but opinion and bringing up things that are not on topic are not good conversation. Get off track, let's stick on track. We're talking about Tray Bell. I don't care about anything else, proven or not proven. Ms. McKee, you use a lot of generalities. The easiest way to get Mark or anybody on your side would be to state direct facts that are documented and proven. Please start doing that. That would, I think, go a long way to fixing stuff. Mr. Johnson, the most senior person on our board, you have the ability, sitting in the middle, to be the glue for this board and you have not been. You haven't. Why not? You've got so much experience. You come in talking about, well, I haven't read this yet or I haven't, let me just clarify things. How long is it going to take? We need you guys to quit arguing, okay? Flat out. You watch Facebook, which is the only thing I can stand to look at for about 15 minutes. Everyone is sick of you arguing. I don't care which side you're on or who you side with, okay? We're tired of it. Find a way. Try harder. Work together. You do not have to agree. But I want to know, standing here, sitting there, watching on TV, that every decision you make is based in fact, you present those facts and your opinions to the public instead of going first, second, no discussion, vote. We're tired of it. Please, open discuss, stay on topic, take opinion out of it, do what's best for the residents. Thank you.
Matthew Ravelberg, 46, here at Cedar Park Boulevard. First off, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of opinion thrown around, but I think as someone who, I do a lot of contracts for our company and as a standard practice, we try to always have three contenders for anything like that. And I think as a resident, I'd like to see any contract, especially multi-year contract, have at least three presentations to work from, whether one of them is asinine out there or not, which is usually what someone always brings to our table, just to throw their hat in the ring. I think, you know, I look at apples to apples, that's where I got the number for you today, which is the State Grand website to help make decisions on this type of thing. You know, it's, you know, I always tend to believe someone saying that AEP numbers don't change that much. You know, that's, again, stock market. I speculate that Tesla stock's going to go up tomorrow night, buy a bunch of it tonight and then be screwed when one of the cars crashes tomorrow. That's the gamble you take, but let's look at what the current standard is and see what's going forward so that us residents can have faith in what's coming out to us, not just because one particular place makes a good, bad, or indifferent. I don't know them from Adam, so I might say they're good, bad, or indifferent, but just see different options. I think we all deserve that. And as far as the Lincoln Park District, I don't see the reason for our board to approve spending more of our residents' money for something. They have not, they have not, in their five-year plan, they have money planned in 2020, they've never invested in that reserve yet. They, you know, held off on putting in their stuff, you know, because of whatever reason. And they've got, they're getting taxed from us already. Let them foot the bill for that. We shouldn't have to put a bill in, put the bill for them to put a road in for their benefit, just for us to have to go get a permit for them for it. You know, they redid parking lots in Johnstown for bike tour. They put lights in for grand bill. They can do that all from their budget. They can put it in a 50-foot road for their own benefit out of the tax money we already pay them in our taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Public comments, please.
Gary Burkholder, 254 Trail East. I guess I want to thank the board or I should say I'm relieved that you didn't take any action on this tonight. Unfortunately, our board has become one of the least transparent in the entire county and to push this through at the last moment without the due diligence and the comments that have been made previously was inappropriate. But since Mr. Taylor has said that he has sent what their fees are, I'll ask you, Mr. Johnson, I mean, there's some debate whether he sent them or not, but have you seen them, Mr. Johnson? And I'll make a public record request tonight for a copy of those because that will be a public record. In addition to that, I don't know of any public contract that is not a public record. You can't even discuss those contracts in executive session. So I'll make a request tonight, a public record request for a copy of that contract. In addition, there's been plenty of discussion, you know, when Mr. Buck was here, that having a 41-month contract on a 24-month aggregation is not good business. It's going to lock us in, so I'm glad you're not going to vote on that tonight. I hope that we do bring other aggregators in, but if you decide to push this through, then I ask that you amend the contract, that it's only a 24-month contract and that it's a public contract. There's a reason they don't want to disclose the fee. They don't want you to know what they're charging. And they have this similar situation. If you research it, you'll find that the city of Columbus had the same problem and they never disclosed their fee. There's a reason for that. The last item I have is the Schenel property, which others have talked about. I have a January 26, 2023 letter here from the county commissioners to Schenel, asking them to resolve these outstanding issues. And they say, we would ask that by the end of this month, and this was January 26, 2023, apparently they're going to give until the end of February, that your staff provide detailed information, including your planned timeline for the completion of this project and how the issues identified by the reviewing agencies and adjoining property owners will be resolved according to the construction plan or the plan, if necessary, to correct the construction plans so that the issues will be resolved. As of this afternoon, they have not responded, so they have about one additional week. But on the other issue, that has to do with the subdivisions, but when it comes to the zoning, my question is, why did we, why did the township, the zoning inspector, issue a certificate of occupancy and compliance? And that compliance means compliance with the zoning resolution. Schenel is not in compliance with the zoning resolution. So why are we issuing a permanent certificate of occupancy? The walkthrough, this occupancy was.
Thank you, Mr. Burkholder.
December 20th of last year.
Again, thank you, Mr. Burkholder. Three minutes.
May I have a few extra seconds?
Go ahead.
Thank you, because Mr. Taylor took up about 40.
Well, wait, hold on. That's Mr. Taylor, but you, you know, he's a presentation, so there you go.
The only thing I want to say is that that walk, that walkthrough.
Thank you, Mr..
That walkthrough was conducted on September 2nd and the zoning inspector never even went to the site where the residents have problems.
Thank you, Mr. Burkholder.
Thank you, Matty Chairman.
Hi. Ashley King, 75, Kelly.
Yes.
Hi. I do have to agree with some of what Ryan said. We've definitely heard from residents, especially on one of the, they'd like to see more unity. If you read through the survey that we had go out for the CAC, I don't know if they thought we were the trustees, but if you read the comments, it seems like they thought we were the trustees. So I would recommend everybody kind of reads through that survey because it was. because it was eye-opening in some ways, and you could tell other people are just angry. Another thing is, if you're going to say, if you're not answering a question, you're hiding something, you should probably answer the questions because there was multiple that were not answered. And I don't think that that's transparent when you're trying to put somebody else down for how they're presenting something. I also wouldn't maybe go about it the way you are, but that's your choice. I think if we all look at it, apologies go a long way, and I think that goes for a lot of people, and I think that that should be something that's considered. I think that's why Mr. Vance couldn't work very well with some of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alicia Zacker, Cumberland Trails. Couple of things that was going on tonight. One of them specifically was about all the stuff on Facebook. Mark Evans posted on Facebook that the trustees are going to try to shove through something. Ryan Davis says, you know, enough with Facebook. Enough. Enough with it if you're going to do that. I'd like to get back down to why this video, why these pages from Werewolf show that you, on October 19th, were on four cameras, only four cameras. The front entrance, the hall corridor, the hall left, and the hall right. This is all of your activity, but only four cameras. This isn't security. This is surveillance. This is a copy from Werewolf, and this is every single move made by the administrator. And isn't that you? You're the administrator. Says it. You have the password. You didn't have the password? Well, it says you did. All it says here is that they spoke with you, and you were accessing it. You downloaded things. You labeled things, and then you went back and watched things. But you only watched four. What was going on on October 19th that you were watching this? Activity on October 19th totaled 83 minutes. This is probably why we need a new camera, because you are accessing it and spying on people. This is ridiculous. I would invite anybody who has any questions to go take a look at this and see who had access to all this, why you're going back and playing back, and going back and playing back. Why did you set the camera and turn the camera on 10 minutes early before our meeting and announce that it's on? I want a copy of it, as I've asked before, and I've stood up here. I want a copy of it. When you turned it on and announced that you're recording this, when I request a copy for a video, I'd like to have it. On this paperwork, which I'd be happy to give to anybody who wants to look at it, you're back and forth and back and forth. 1233 to 104 to 108 to 127 to 158 to 202, 206 to 211. If you compare those over here, you're rewinding and going back, rewinding, going back, watching, 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 four locations, nothing else. You were worried about security, sir. You'd been looking at it at night. You'd be looking at the back lot, and you'd be looking at all the other things that are going on out here. This is spying. I recommend that you do get another. Put it behind a firewall and set up security the way it should be. Talking about spending $11,000. This is spending hours instead of working for us. You're spying.
Thank you. Is there any other public comments tonight?
John Knarre, 10785 Palmer Road. I just wanted to thank Ms. McGee for the appointment to the judge's position. If you guys were here when that was announced, Mark just about swallowed his pinky, pacified to other people. His comments and outbursts towards a resident was uncalled for. He knows nothing about me, but yet he went off on a tangent. You would have thought I won the lottery, and it was his ticket. It's a non-paying voluntary position, and you've seen his outbursts. All of this activity on this board right now started when Mark was elected. Really started before he was elected. I'm not going to look at the camera because I don't care if they know what my face looks like or not. I've seen some folks come up and turn to it, get their profile on there for a vote or whatever.
Are you talking to Mike? Closer into the mic.
Closer to the mic. So, you know, it started when he started bringing his camera to the meetings and thinking that everybody wants to sit at home and watch these meetings. I'm sure there probably are some that get, you know, do it. I'll listen to it, and I can't hardly understand what's being said by this microphone anyway, but beside the point. It all started when Mark was president. He brought up something that "Dunton has been updated for a year. This right here has not been updated for a year." Well, he was a president for three or four months. Why wasn't something done then? He was elected as president on two votes. I nominated myself for president. Ms. McGee says second. Johnson, he didn't say nothing. He just sat there. So McGee voted, and Kemp has voted. I'm the president now. He started right off bashing, belittling the other members, residents. You know, I mean, I don't like talking about people, but you know, when he brings it up on Facebook and everything he does on there, it all started from that point, and it's still continuing because he will not work with anybody. If it's not his idea, it will not fly. You said something about that McGee would get him on her side. She cannot get him on her side. It won't work. Thank you, Mattie.
Thank you. Is there any other public comments tonight? All right, we'll move over into new business. I move Resolution 23022101, Resolution to appoint members of the Licking County Tax Incentive Review Council, appointing Nicole Washington and John Carlisle as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Trustee Johnson?
None.
Discussion, Mr. Evans?
Yes, I think this is wholly inappropriate, that again, this is another appointment that is not put out for the public or even discussed. This was a pre-arranged meeting here. I didn't know who was going to be appointed, but to appoint John Carlisle to this board after he was on the West Licking Development CIC that he allowed to go default. He's also been hired as the Harrison Economic Development Director, so he's got a conflict of interest with our interests as a township. Mr. Carlisle provided zero transition to Ms. McGee and I here when we came aboard, so he doesn't represent the best interest of the township. He doesn't care about this township. And yet, he's going to be appointed to this board again. He does not follow and fulfill records requests, but that seems to be a similar pattern with this board. And this is just wholly inappropriate to put handpicked individuals in these places. These should be opened up to many people that want to serve this township and not just put your political people in here. Now, it's been said that, Ms. McGee, you're working very closely with Mr. Carlisle now, and that's a real shame. Prior to taking our seats, you wanted to remove Mr. Carlisle. Now you want to put him on the board again. So this should not be done. Mr. Carlisle does not have the best interest nor follow any of the ORC regarding records or even help the township. So it should not be done. I move to table this resolution until this position and the other can be properly advertised, applicants sought, interviewed.
I'm going to go ahead and make my discussion now since I didn't get the outbursts.
There's a motion on the floor, please.
Well, you didn't give me a chance to discuss, so I want to continue my discussion. Excuse me, we were still in discussion, you know, so I want to continue and make my discussion. I'll let you go, and Mr. Evans.
Robert, first of all, you have to address the motion on the floor.
Again. Is there a second?
Thank you.
So it died. So let's go ahead and into my discussion. When you talked about answering public records requests, I'm not sure what you mean by Mr. John Carlisle answering public records requests. Could you explain that, please?
Are we setting aside the motion that we always speak once?
Again, I have not spoken. This is my discussion right now.
So this is your time?
Yes, sir. I just asked you a question.
Yes, Mr. Carlisle has failed repeatedly to honor records requests, so he will likely not honor those with this committee also.
So are you saying since he left from being a board member, or you're saying during his-
He's been a current board member of various committees, and he does not fulfill records requests. And you yourself wanted to remove Mr. Carlisle. I've got that text.
Again, you keep saying what I did, okay? I explained to you, and I explained publicly. You don't just remove people off boards and tell their term limits. I'm a professional. I've always done that.
That's how it works.
So that's how I do business. I'm sorry. You may not understand that, okay? Because it's not personal with me, so I'm going to do things professionally. Second of all, when you talk about public records requests, there's a lot of them out there, and I won't go into detail about it, but they know that they have not filled those requests. So this has nothing to do with Mr. John fulfilling the seat as a member of the Tax Incentive Review Council. Has nothing to do with that. So, but I just want to address this since you brought it up at the time. So I want to go ahead and do a roll call for, to appoint Mr. John Carlisle and then Nicole Washington as presented. Is there a second? We wanted to discuss some roll call. Ms. Varian?
Mr. Evans?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes. I move Resolution 23022102, Resolution to appoint member of the Licking County City of Reynoldsburg Tax Incentive Review Council, appointing Nicole Washington and John Carlisle as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Johnson?
None.
Mr. Evans?
Yes. Again, you're going to appoint an individual that bribed the school district with Art for Funds, with CARES Act funds. You're appointing the person that was removed from office by the majority of this township that conducted, I'm told, improprieties. I mean, just review his emails from before, the ones that weren't deleted.
Do you still have those?
It's shocking. It's shocking. No, as I requested, that password has been changed, and email access is only through Ms. McGee and Laura Brown. That access was removed from our fiscal officer within 24 hours with a threat from outside counsel at Ms. McGee's insistence. So no, I do not have those, and I've record requested those, but they include things like a job for his girlfriend at FedEx before the issues with the bond issuance to you and I to give him a call before he issued that bond to our insurer. And you remember all those issues where they were trying to do what they were doing. So John Carlisle, I mean, you're working hand-in-hand with him. We brought in his political guy as our assistant zoning inspector. You're, I mean, this is, can't we move away and get good people to serve? I mean, you're not even trying, again, with Trivelle. You're not even asking for options. And here again, you're just shoving it through, and it's improper, Nicole Washington. I mean, you did that before. There was no discussion, no background presented to this board. I don't know how Jeff even knew about her unless they conspired outside the meeting, but yet after the meeting, you had already to give to the reporter information on her that you wouldn't even give to the board members. This is improper, the way this is being administered, and to put John Carlisle back on a board is just astounding.
Okay, well, I'm going to go ahead and discuss Ms. Washington's resume. The Newark Advocate, Maria DeVito, personally came to me after a meeting and asked for information. Okay, so she got it. The other information, as far as the board was concerned, it came, I mean, you went out there publicly and said stuff that was not true, just like you're doing now. You talked about a bribe. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, the state of Ohio did an investigation and found nothing there, and you still say there's a bribe. I don't understand that. I just don't understand that.
Do you not recall what you said on that?
So when you talk about, when you go back and talk about when we were being bonded and licensed, I have no idea as far as if that was true because you tend to make up stuff. I've seen a lot of things you made up about me as recent as today, when you said that I'm working with Mr. John and also Mr. Latella. That's not true. So, you know, you make up stuff. You say it. People, some of your people believe it, but most of the people in the township are smart enough to know that you tell a lot of lies.
I am the truth.
And you have to stop it because it's not working in your favor. Roll call, Ms. Varian?
Mr. Evans?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes. I'm turning to me, you know, to Mr. Trustee Johnson regarding the road department item.
We'll start off with, I gave you guys a copy of Jess Howard. Quote for light poles, $7,051, not to exceed. We need this pricing. It says it's good for 30 days. This is labor. Where they replace the poles at? Taylor Road?
Taylor Road, Taylor Road, southwest.
And they got, what happened? Did they get hit or?
Yeah, they've been hit.
Enough times they need replaced?
They're just not, they're not stocked.
Okay. So I make a motion that we authorize $7,000, not to exceed $7,051 to Jess Howard Company for light poles.
Repair replacement. I'll second.
Discussion, Mr. Trustee Johnson? What about you, Dr. Trustee Evans?
Above and, these are the ones, do we have insurance information for all that? It's ultimately going to be reimbursed to us, correct? Okay.
I think one of them, I didn't get to skip that information, but I'm not out of perception.
Put them in, put them in Georgia.
Normally, we try to get it back.
Oh, yeah. Well, I know that's been out of stock. I mean, supply chain issues. And, yeah, I remember going out there, and I had to actually kind of rewrap some of the electric that was sticking out. All right. We're going to do roll?
Roll call?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Next thing I have is proposal for state security for a system that has monitor for alarms and so forth, vulnerabilities out there at the garage. The total for that is $10,987. Monthly monitor is $35 a month. He said it could be done. Needs two weeks notice to get it done. Takes some days to do the work. And we got door contacts, siren, keypads, everything goes with it. I called over, he stopped by, talked with Laura, what you gave in front of us on that. So I'd like to make a motion that we spend $10,000- So I'd like to make a motion that we spend $10,987 to state security. And then approve a $35 a month monitoring charge for a security system for the garage.
I'll make a second. Motion. Discussion?
Yes, I have questions on this. Number one, it's not on the agenda. Why aren't we listing these things on the agenda? Again, this goes to transparency. Uh, I didn't even know that we're discussing it. I don't have that.
Did you get it last week?
That packet. Yeah, but we're not, we weren't discussing it today because it's not on the agenda. Again, are, so we're throwing away the system we have now?
Where?
At the garage?
No.
Those cameras that are there now are going to stay, but they're just adding to it.
Cameras only record. They don't record anybody walking around. The reports like breaks in and they don't record any of that. They just.
That's what I'm saying. So you're replacing the system there with the one that will do that.
The system there stays, Jeff. It's, they're just not being monitored. They're adding to it.
Yeah, there's some monitors. It's alarms.
And more camera, more cameras? No more cameras?
No, there's no cameras on it. Control panel, keypad, motion detectors, door contacts, alarm sirens, battery, radio communicator.
Wired. Okay, well, I, I would, we should have a discussion in executive session because we, we should really discuss what I need to discuss in public. About the security kind of vulnerabilities or possible vulnerabilities to have a proper discussion. As I said last time, we should have had an executive session about this. And I, that's what I would have expected, that we have an executive session as we did last year when I tried to get the, the security and video there improved and was denied.
Do you happen to have the hardware from there that was over there before?
What do you mean? We're talking about this, this here now, but, um.
They're not talking maybe the video stuff over there, Mark. So this is just a new, it's a new system.
Right, but no, no video, I mean, if you, so.
Video has nothing to do with it.
I make the motion, I don't know if we can legally go, to go into a quick executive session to discuss this. Okay, so I guess I have to do it in public. There are additions to the video that are needed. There are areas that are not covered.
This is not part of, video is not part of this.
Why aren't, if you're improving the system and if you're doing that, why wouldn't we do it at one time? Again, economies of scale. If they're out there doing something, adding on something is much cheaper than bringing them out to do something extra. We had that proposal from Rob Levins of SOS previously. And I know Ms. McKee tried to, uh, reach out to him about it when I did last year about the needed additions there. So why aren't those being addressed? And $11,000 for all that seems pretty expensive. Have we gotten other bids?
You don't have to have other bids. It's under certain amounts.
But it's wise to. If, if a contractor thinks, oh, I'm in there, they can charge whatever they want.
No, they, they came high.
And again, this should not be taken up. Those on the agenda, we're not prepared.
Did you have a close one?
I have motion. If we have a second, I have six questions. I'll read them.
That's wrote this vote, this is here.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Third item, I have resignation letter from Brandon Maringer. Says, he's given us two weeks' notice, which was effective 2/14/23. Disappointed to work till March 3rd. Says I'll be going to Fairfield County closer to home and better benefits. Room for growth. Thanks for the opportunity. So I'd like to make a motion to accept Brandon Maringer's resignation.
Second. Discussion?
Yeah, I, I do, these were my concerns about retaining people before. And as previous supervisor that was removed from me on January 3rd. The plan was to address the pay, the pay issues because that's why the last guy left. Uh, you can go anywhere you want and, and make a lot more and increase benefits. You cannot get better medical benefits than we have, not unless they start cutting you checks. Everything is paid for. Everything. I've never seen anything like it. Most other municipalities don't have that. So I'm concerned we're gonna have more and more people leaving without handling it properly. And that is my concern with the union, with zero updates per year. And to address that, Ms. McKee appointed herself to Mr. Johnson and refused to update. I've asked. That was under Ms. McKee, even under my presidency. So, uh, I'm sorry to see him leave. He was a good employee. He was actually here before. So this is the second time he, he's leaving. And I'm concerned that the road crew is down two guys now. And there's, there's no real efforts to fill it.
I'm, I would like to see if we can put some of, post those positions over at OTA like we did with the administrator position. So we can get it on their website. They'll, I think they'll have, they'll have it up for like 30 days or more. Yeah, so I just wanted to bring that up. That's an option. So I, I would like to make a motion to post the positions over at OTA. I think there was a fee of what, $20?
Did you guys roll call that last motion? I was walking back.
Oh. Yeah. This is all discussion. Let's make a roll call for his resignation.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. Make a, put a motion on the, on the floor that we could post those positions over at OTA. Was it $20? Yeah. And they'll keep it up for 30 days.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
Because I think we posted somewhere else or all the places. Now we can find that, so.
Still on the website, on our website.
Still on our website?
It's never been taken.
Then we put it on, there's $20 to put on that one, I guess.
And then I know at one time, uh, the task of chamber conduct was still, we looked at that too, if we wanted to post it out there. But they really didn't have a lot going on to where, so, um, it's kind of difficult to upload it the way they had it set up, so. What'd you say? You'll do it? Okay. So we can put it up there on, um.
Thank you.
The task of chamber conduct site as well.
There's no charge on there?
Yeah, right, right. That's the part of getting part, right? Yep, chamber. So that's a good thing. Just done.
I, I'd like to offer an amendment to that motion to add additional authorization for Jeff Johnson up to $1,000 to pursue any other advertising, uh, searches, uh, professional searches to fill these positions because these are critical to our road department. And Mr. Copley needs, uh, that support in his department. We, we had that one.
Can you give a second?
Okay.
To discuss?
Sure.
That's a very long motion.
Sure.
Well, I'll second it just to get to discussion.
Okay. Well, again, Mr. Copley needs the support. In the entire time that we've had, um, that one opening, we had two applicants. And, you know, qualifications weren't there or, and before, when, when we're hiring, uh, the three that came in, pay was a real issue. A lot of people didn't come over here because they could make a lot more elsewhere. And that's what I'm concerned about, um, that we're not at the, the, the pay that needs to attract these people. They have to have a CDL. Anybody, the, the last guy left because he could go drop containers off for more money. And all he has is drop and pick up containers. We're asking guys to take a lot of responsibility in this township. And again, the benefits are, I haven't seen any benefit. But the pay needs to be increased, I believe. I don't want to violate anything with the union negotiations or that. But I was told before that we should act, uh, as if normal until there is, uh, a union contract in place. So I believe to retain the people we, we've got, that needs to be addressed. But you can't bring in people that make more than the ones that are here, so that needs to be addressed. But we're gonna need some active advertisement. You, you're talking about $20, like trying to keep it $20. This is some budget shopping. This isn't, you know, and again, we had that prior authority before, but now we're limited to office supplies. You should have some autonomy. I would agree with you as the road supervisor. Because he didn't support any of the other hirings. He delayed all that stuff. But now that you are, you need to be supported and you need to do what you can to do that. Posting at OTA, who's looking at that? That's a truck driver. We need CDL drivers. They're not going to OTA or what's that?
That's not true. You got word of mouth. I think there's people that, you know, type what you can get out there.
And that's why we need to spend the money to allow Mr. Johnson at his discretion up to $1,000 to advertise, head whatever's needed to fill these positions to support Mr. Copley and the residents and businesses in our township. Especially since the other position has been unfulfilled for that long.
And we can't discuss the union. He's right. Um, just to be clear, it was not in the hands of the township that was being held up. Just to make that clear. It was not being held up by the township, even though there's a, he keeps making that statement. It was not on our side, so, um, but we won't go more into details than that because it is, we're still in contract negotiation right now, so. But yeah, I agree. We need to post it as many places as we can to try to get the experience here applied. We're down to, um.
Three.
Three?
I'll say this, I haven't looked before because I haven't been on the road, proof from Long Beach, more than, over from more than two weeks on the time ago. So, um, if you have sites, Mr. Evans, or somewhere, we should, if you're seeing that, my name too, please forward those to me.
Well, I think social media is a great thing. I still don't understand why we don't have a social media page. But you can pay for advertising that will get out to people. And just as the individuals that we, we got were in another jurisdiction, maybe somebody wants to meet here. But how are they gonna know unless they see it? Social media is one thing. You can do a radio ad. You can do, there's so many things that can be done, but they need to be done. That's what I'm saying. The limit to, to say we're, we need road crew and we're gonna only spend $20?
I hate to interrupt, sorry. But you can have like some of those temporary agencies. I know my brother's in construction and we can use a VD.
Yeah.
Yeah. There, there's a lot that.
Great lot of VD for operators and drivers.
So you might have to say that.
And a lot of, a lot of those, you gotta pay a fee as the employer side of it, which is fine. But that's why I say we need to authorize Mr. Johnson as, as part of the road supervisor to be able to do it and not be micromanaged by the fourth.
Micromanage, come on. Neo-Gov?
Come in.
Neo-Gov?
Neo-Gov.
Come in. So there's a motion on the floor.
Think it may have passed and may have failed for. So you made a motion. I didn't get a second. Is there a second?
A second.
Second, okay. Second for discussion?
That was the motion to amend, the original motion, giving Jeff Johnson the added authority of up to $1,000 to advertise, secure, along with the $20 at the OTA. Do we want a roll call?
Is there any other discussion? Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Evans? Other discussion finished?
No, we, one time.
Roll call?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. As amended, pass the roll call as amended. Roll call.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Right, yes.
That's all I have.
Sorry, that's all I have.
No, I would just ask that you listen to individual the next time, so you know, you're prepared.
We'll move on under, again, under old business. Um, I don't need to make any, um, we had our discussion with, um, Licking County Park District. So, um, I don't need to.
You don't have any action?
Action on that at all. And then, um, for Licking County Membership 2023, I would recommend that we table that until the next meeting. Only because I didn't hear back from them, I made, um, I reached out to them. I had a couple of questions on the contract, so. I don't want to vote on a contract personally until I know that my questions are answered, so.
Okay, well, I would suggest the board act quickly because the contract ended on February 13th.
That's exactly right.
We're not part of the, of Licking County.
So you're ready? Do I, is there a second on that or do I have to do anything?
There was no motion.
Okay. I move to approve the additional $382.82 to Bruce, Bruce, Branches, Johnson and Griggs for 2022. Is there a second?
I'll second. What, this is for?
Discussion. It's limited to three minutes. Johnson, Mr. Johnson?
I ask you what?
Oh, we, um, there was an additional $382.82 that needed to be paid for the, uh, the bill. So that's where that came in.
Was it this part or was it, was it something?
This was.
We didn't pay something or was it just, it not an error in their accounting fees or what?
Well, it was a little bit over by $382.82. So it wasn't an error, it's just they didn't count it in, so we had to pay the difference. So we didn't pay it. So it.
What it is is you were under what you appropriated for.
So we have to pay the $282.82 difference.
I have discussion.
Go ahead, Mr. Johnson, I mean, Mr. Evans.
Uh, yes, this was, uh, due to, I mean, earlier in the year, Ms. McKee exceeded the authorized spending of $10,000 by over $30,000. So that was, that was finally corrected afterwards, ignored for quite a while. And, uh, the board authorized an additional $30,000, uh, or $40,000, I think it was. But Ms. McKee, again, exceeded that board authorization. So this is now required to go back. And what we need to do as a board is if there's a spending limit that is adhered to. It seems like there's just flagrant violations of, I don't need to follow the rules because I'm the chairperson. And the chairperson is the only one authorized as the contact person with the board. And my concern is also that, that they're delving into matters that this board hasn't approved or hasn't brought to them. You're the contact person. You're not the one directing them to do everything, uh, from spending our fiscal officer threatening, uh, letters of tortuous interference, uh, of dealing with West Licking Development Group, CIC, that this board didn't move on. But you're expending a lot of money on that. Uh, that should be a board decision. And these expenditures continue to be violated, the limits, you know, it, it should be addressed properly. We have rules for a reason and should be brought to the board and adhered to. And it's not being done so.
The reason, um, we have a little bit more than we should on our legal bills is because we have a trustee that continuously threatens the board and sends a lot of information that the public doesn't know. And I will not go into detail. But there's a lot of stuff that comes into our emails that, um, I feel that I need to run by counsel. Yes, I make a decision if it should go to counsel or should go to the prosecutor's office. Now here in my hand here, from January 10th to April, Mr. Evans spent $63,685 with Albertson &amp; Albertson. Average is $15,921 per month. That was in the first four months of being the president of the board. So this is not because we want to tit for tat, but it's facts. This right here.
I was president for two and a half months.
That's even worse. No, 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 no. Here it is. Your name's authorized it. So you were still reaching out to them because we didn't have a, a, a resolution on the table that said you couldn't do it. Okay, now we do. So there, here it is.
That authorization.
So I want to make sure that it was clear.
That authorization was from prior org.
$63,685, and these bills, this was paid, this was paid prior, this is why, one of the reasons why we removed our signature. Because bills were being paid before the board approved it.
You proved every single.
This is, yeah, after the fact, after the fact.
Right.
So this is, this is what I have here, okay?
So public record.
So.
Every email is public record.
To be clear, that this is why our bills are what they are with Griggs. You have.
The prosecutor is free.
You have threatened Mr. Griggs' office. And that to me alone is just uncalled for. The emails that we see, a lot of the residents don't know. The constant lies that you tell constantly, constantly, across that podium and also on social media.
When they're violating the $10,000 spending.
We'll continue to move on. Don't look, don't look over here, look over here, right? This is it, right here, Mr. Evans, $63,000.
You misconstrue that.
So let's move on. So I would like, is there a second out there already?
Yeah.
Okay, roll call, Ms. Varian?
Mr. Evans?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. And we'll move over into the fiscal officer report. I move Resolution 23021703 to approve the purchase orders as presented. Is there a second?
What's that?
230221, you're on the three.
We're on three.
Tax incentive.
230217.
No, this is 17.
Oh, should be 03? Tax incentive with 01 and 02, correct?
Yes, but it's 21 in the middle, not 17.
21?
Yeah.
Okay.
21, definitely.
Oh, I see what says 17, should be 21, okay. 2103, okay, that's, that's, thank you for catching that. Are you seconded?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion? Mr. Evans?
No, not these.
Okay. Trustee Johnson, special?
None.
Okay, roll call, Ms. Varian?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. I move to ratify the payment of the above listed bills for February as shown on the payment listing. Is there a second?
A second.
Discussion, Mr. Evans?
T-Mobile bill, is there a reason that that's not a detailed bill? That, because I know there's been records requests on that with call logs and those aren't provided. And I know the fiscal officer has not provided access to that as she's requesting.
Oh, so you're asking me that question? Okay, for you, you, I know you and Mr. Steve Sly both asked for that bill. So you can see what calls are coming in and out, because you claim that I was talking to Mr. Latella. That's not true, but I, the bills are there, they're open in public records. Mrs. Varian gets the bill and you need to see what, I don't see why you need to have it, but you can have it if you need it, I have nothing to hide.
Provide the online access so that she can see the call details.
For what?
Well.
Because it's part of public record, it's.
Well, we'll, we'll see how that goes, it's not a problem, I have anything to hide. I mean, it's constant, you and Mr. Sly still still ask them for public records on regular basis.
So that's a no, but then I do have a question about Brochus and Griggs. We have a prosecutor that is free. Bringing on Brochus Griggs was supposed to deal with special economic development. It's, they're, they're being used as a personal attorney here. That's improper, things should be addressed to the prosecutor. And when they say they can't handle it, outside counsel is used. So I do have issues with, again, the West Leaking Development Group, he's working on that. There's been no board action to forward that to them to deal with. That again, went to bumped under John Carlisle.
Again, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Evans, they own the task, they own task, please.
I'm speaking, I am, I'm talking about the bills that are presented for Brochus and Griggs. I think it's improper that, Ms. McKee, you are just directing them on anything that you want. And it should be board action that is referred to them. Because again, they're special counsel, we have a prosecutor that costs us nothing. So anything going to them should be approved by the board and a special circumstance. And it's not being so. And I won't discuss it this one, but the next bill, there's real questions on that one because they build with no authority.
Roll call, Ms. Varian?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. Okay, I guess we can move over to announcements and trustee comments. Please limit it to three minutes and I'll just come out. I want to share with the public here. I went to the Ohio Town Sip Association Conference several weeks ago, the 2023 conference, a great conference. Took several training courses there. In spite of a trustee telling the public that I didn't go and take any of the training, so I have a reimbursement check that's in here by Ms. Varian for my payment, where I paid to go to the training upfront, so I'm being reimbursed. But I attended it, I'm a part of an executive board clout, took some training there as well as some additional training. So I wish that a trustee was out telling the public that I didn't attend, that's another one of your lies. So I just wish you would not tell lies to the public, please, has to stop. That's, I'm done, that's enough for me.
All right, first, I never said you weren't there, I said you weren't seen when somebody asked me. I would ask you to produce where I said you were not there. Again, that is the lie. I would state that, yes, there's contention up here. There was contention in the election because I'm fighting for this township and the residents. If I didn't speak up tonight, that treble contract would have been approved. If I didn't speak up, you'd have more warehouses at 310 in Palma. And you'd have a warehouse in front of FedEx. So it's not arguing, it's fighting for a cause. And to stay silent would, would be wrong. And I've invested over three years as a resident fighting for other residents. And I will not stop. Now, again, others have spoken in here saying Ms. McKee told them, told them, stop trying to get us to work together. Some don't want to work together, some aren't transparent. So when I was president, this board had all the information before, all the proposed draft ideas, all the packet information, not once since Ms. McKee took over. Regarding the video, there was a question about the video. You know why there was four cameras? Because I was downloading, on the 19th, what happened? Ms. McKee and Mr. Bill Vance were covering cameras.
What if the four, what if six, what if the four, six incidents is?
And order, Ms. McKee.
Or it's point of order.
446.
Point of order, it's out of order, I'd like to reclaim my time too. So that's what was going on. And I was able to download most of that video before that access was taken away. And Ms. McKee removed the NVR for four days before handing it over. I still have a question of what was done with that. So, and Mr. Kennard, you mentioned, I know nothing about you. You interviewed for a prior Jezzy and, and other board position, so I do know.
Yeah, you did.
You do, this is my time, Mr. Kennard. This is my time, Mr. Kennard. This is my time, Mr. Kennard. And I do know you for harassing me as a resident during one of the meetings. So are we, are we gonna, I'm still speaking, and point of order, you cannot adjourn in the middle of Congress.
Three minutes is up.
Three minutes?
Has not, I've been interrupted. So again, and those that say that it's because me and Mr. Vance won't work together, the first words Mr. Vance said to me, he didn't even introduce himself, said, I'm gonna keep you in check. So he was brought in here for one reason, to work only with one person, and that's what he did. One person.
Can I say something?
Yes, sir.
That was a good fashioned speech.
I'm gonna say something, you wanna say something, but I can say something. Everybody has their opinions and everybody can present their opinions. But I don't think I have to accept your opinions as fact. And a lot of these opinions are, that are floating around here, I think that's part of the problem, they're presented as fact. And so I would ask that you realize that a lot of these facts that are supposedly facts are just opinions and not facts that are being presented. So take that into mind.
I've got facts of that.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Johnson. I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.